For now, call on our November 23rd County Commission meeting to order. Call on Mr. Johnson for the indication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray, please. Hallelujah, Father, again we come in your presence. Although we're invited, Father, we express our own shortcomings and we confess them. We ask for your wisdom. We ask for the forgiveness of our sins, that you would impart your wisdom to us, Father, that we may act in a way that would please you and be of greatest benefit to the people of this county, and we ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mashburn, do we have adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there are just a couple of adjustments to make. Under Administrative Matters, Item A, which is Memo Number Three, that will be pulled from the agenda this evening and will be placed on the first meeting, regular meeting, in December. There, Item I, there's a part, a portion of that that we found out later should have been included, and that is a request from the Department of Transportation for a waiver of the fees to abandon that road. Mr. Smith is here, and he can discuss that with you later. But part of that request is a request to waive the fees to abandon that road. Those are the two changes I have. Mr. Chairman.
Are there any additions, corrections?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mashburn, I apologize, the item to delete was Memo Number Three, is that correct?
Memo Number Three, Item A, Under Administrative Matters.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions? Anything else to add? If not, I will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All of the most please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. I want to before the board, Ms. Blumstein. I think she's, you here?
Sure. Amber McGinnis is here tonight to present our financial report of June 30, 2010 audit. And I want to say I appreciate every county employee, every department head, in maintaining a good financial status for us this year. The accountability is just exemplary, and I appreciate the board's support and your guidance. 2010 wasn't easy for any of us, and we appreciate your support throughout the year. Now I ask Amber to come to the microphone.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come present to you tonight a summary of the 2009, 2010 financial statements. I do have a set of slides here to show to you, and you should also have a copy of them in your agenda packets. First of all, I would like to, thank you. First of all, I would like to thank Susan and Deb and their staff for their cooperation in the audit. It would not be possible to complete the audit in a timely manner and to get the information that we need to perform the audit without their assistance. The audit did receive, the financial statements did receive an unqualified opinion, which is a clean opinion, so that's what you're aiming for. The general fund cash was approximately $35 million at June 30th. General fund revenues totaled $157 million, and expenditures came in at $158 million. This slide shows a general fund summary with 2009 and 2010. The left side of each set is revenues and other financing sources, which would be debt proceeds, transfers in from other funds, and the right side is expenditures and other financing uses, which would be transfers out. We have a few slides on fund balance, and this really serves as a measure of the county's financial resources available. And currently, they are classified in three categories: reserved, unreserved but designated, and unreserved and undesignedated. And both of those last two categories are available fund balance. Here we show a history of total fund balance since 2008, and you can see 2010's total fund balance for the general fund was approximately $43 million, and that was about a $1.9 million decrease over 630, 2009. Here we have fund balance position, total fund balance, less the reserved fund balance amounts, leaves your unreserved and undesignedated at approximately $25 million at June 30th. This slide shows unreserved fund balance as a percentage of your general fund expenditures, and you can see that that increased one percentage point over 2009 to 16 percent, and that's approximately two months' worth of expenses in your general fund fund balance. The next series of slides discusses general fund revenues. The top spot was property taxes, of course, at 58 percent. Sales tax was second at 16 percent, and federal and state grants was third at 13 percent. And then other revenue sources made up 13 percent.
That, on that last slide, the percentages are a little bit skewed, just mainly because the sales tax revenues were down? I mean, as a percentage in the past?
Yes, it's probably generally been a little bit higher percentage. Is that what you mean? Yeah. I don't have last year's percentages with me, but.
That's fine.
Property tax increased about 2.8 percent to $91,700,000 for 2010. Sales tax, of course, decreased approximately 17 percent over 2009 to $24,700,000. And federal and state grants actually increased about 7 percent to $20,300,000, and the majority of that increase was due to several ARRA funding grants received in the fiscal year. Same information presented for expenditures. The top function of expenditures was education at 32 percent. Human services was second at 21 percent, and public safety third at 17 percent. This slide shows the education expenses, and this does not include the debt service for schools, and this showed a decrease of 1.3 percent. Human services decreased 1.2 million or 3.5 percent over June 30th, 2009, and a lot of that had to do with the Medicaid expenses.
Can I get you to move the microphone a little bit closer, please?
Sure. Sorry about that. Next is public safety, a decrease of 1.3 million or 4.5 percent. And we have one slide on the enterprise fund, the solid waste disposal facility fund. And really, the focus of this slide should be the last two lines, that the cash flow from operations was sufficient to cover the debt service, 3.5 million to the 2.1 million of debt service for the year. And that's what you like to see. This next series of slides discusses survey results from a survey conducted by the North Carolina County Commissioners Association. You may have heard, seen some of these results before. Ninety-five out of the 100 North Carolina counties responded to this, and it really just paints a picture of the current state and local conditions in the economy. Sixteen counties that responded increased their tax rate at an average of 3.3 cents during the '09-10 fiscal year. Forty-nine counties of the 95 cut budgets again, as they did the year before. Forty-four counties reported a hiring freeze, and 14 counties laid off existing employees. And I'll just hit some of the highlights on these. Forty-three counties cut positions. Seven counties implemented mandatory furloughs, and some of the other actions that counties took included salary decreases, fewer paid holidays, and decreased or stopped 401K contributions. Twenty-five counties of the 95 that responded also saw property decreased valuations, and 31 of the 100 counties in the state saw assessed tax value above the market value. And of course, the last two lines there show that sales tax dropped off again, as in the previous year. Here we see that 48 counties relied on fund balance to help offset budget deficit in 2010, and I'm actually surprised that number isn't higher than 48. Twenty counties used fund balance to replace lottery funds, and 61 counties reported using some or all of the lottery funds for school debt sales. This is where the focus really is. This shows what our state legislature faces right now. The 2009-10 budget included $1.3 billion in temporary taxes, 1.6 billion in federal stimulus dollars, and .3 billion in other non-recurring budget reductions. So the total of that is a budget gap going into the 2011-12 fiscal year of $3.2 billion. So what does that mean to local government? They keep saying transformational government, so I guess we'll wait to see what that means. They may be combining departments at the state level, potential loss of jobs, and then the retirement system is massively underfunded. As you probably know, the contribution rates are increasing. Grant funding possibly be reduced, and they may be passing along some expenditures back to the county. And we expect that money from the state will be slow coming. If you have a reimbursement grant, you may want to reimburse, request reimbursement as soon as you can, because you may be waiting on those funds for a while. So the state is actually in financial trouble, and this will definitely affect local government. So we just wanted to provide those survey results to you for your information. The last slide I have discusses a financial reporting change for the June 30, 2011 fiscal year, and this is a standard passed down from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and it affects special revenue funds and fund balance reporting. So in your June, the next comprehensive annual financial report that you get will report fund balance in a different way. It will be categorized in a different way than you're used to seeing. So that's one change to expect for GASB 54 is the standard. And that's the conclusion of the summary. If you have any questions, I'll answer them now.
Do we have any questions at this time? Thank you.
I've got one, Mr.
Okay.
You said a minute ago, 31 of 100 counties see assessed value above market value?
Mm-hmm.
No way to tell how many of those counties had a reevaluation this year, is there?
I do not have that information, no.
I bet if all of them have, it'd be 100 out of 100. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Blumstein, do you have anything else? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mashburn, we don't need a motion on that. It's information, Ron.
No, you don't need to take any of it.
Is Mr. Ross Rodgerston here?
He's here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Russ Rodgerston, and with the Mooresville South Iredale Economic Development Corporation. I also have with me Mr. Stephen Daly, who is Vice President and General Manager of NGK Ceramics. It's a pleasure to be here this evening because we're here to discuss with you NGK's plans for their 12th expansion in Iredale County since they arrived in 1988 in the South Iredale industrial park. They currently employ 431 people and 122 temporary workers as well. They're a manufacturer of ceramic honeycomb catalytic, honeycombs for catalytic converters, primarily in the automobile industry, and this expansion is going to involve the truck industry as well. The expansion is going to allow them to expand the raw material preparation for a new extrusion line, and they also plan to expand their bulk rail. In fact, they do plan on improving the rail spur, so there'll be less blockage of the Zepa Road in this expansion, which is, will be a plus for not only NGK, but our community as well. And that will help them with the receipt of raw materials. The expansion will be completed in December of 2011 with a total investment of $43.9 million. And upon the completion of the expansion, they'll create 40, or 60, new full-time jobs. And that will be the full-time employment of 491, which puts them in the top five employers in the county for the number of employees. In accordance with the Iredale County Industrial Development Incentive Program, we're here this evening to ask for a five-year incentive at 3.46 of the increased value. That will, taking in account appreciation for machinery and equipment as well, and that grant would total to $717,000 over the five-year period of time, an average of $143,400. At this time, I would also like Mr. Daly to say a few words and tell you a little bit about what they've been up to.
Thank you, Russell.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as Russell said, my name is Steve Daly. I'm Vice President and General Manager for NGK here in Mooresville. Fortunately, we have been successful in our business, as this is our 12th expansion over the 22 years that we've been here. I came here tonight to ask for your support in this newest endeavor. This type of support is one of the elements our headquarters is evaluating when they're making the decision on where to actually place an expansion. In this case, corporate planners consider other sites within North Carolina or South Carolina, and also, we recently opened a facility in Mexico, and they were considering possibly putting things there. But our established track record here in Iredale County, along with the support that you have given in the past, convinced them that investing here is the right decision. To close, I'd like you to know that NGK will do our best to continue to make good, high-quality products, which help win the business, but also will provide good jobs here in Iredale County, which I think we can all appreciate. I guess at the end of this thing, we can be proud to say that not only are our products made in the USA, but they're also made here in Iredale County. So that's all I had to present, unless anybody's got a question or two.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. First of all, we sure are happy that NGK has chosen to grow here. It's definitely been a win-win situation for the community as well as your company. So first of all, thank you. Next is, I did have a question. You said you thought that you would create about 60 jobs after this full expansion has taken place?
Yes, sir.
Of those 60 jobs, about how many of them would you expect that you'll have to recruit from probably outside the community to fill? And how many would we think that would be filled probably from folks within the community who are here already?
Probably four or five that I would consider on the professional level for management or engineering or something like that.
Right.
They could as well come from this community, but we'll recruit outwardly there. The rest of those jobs would be people who would be, I guess, within the newspaper reach of Mooresville.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions? Please thank you, sir, for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
We will now go into a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or against this request, now is your time. If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we grant the $717,000 economic incentive over a five-year period based on a $43.9 million investment by NGK Ceramics.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. 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 Those opposed.
No.
Thank you, Ms. Rodgerston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. Commissioners, we hope to see you soon with some more growth in our community.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. I will turn it over to Ms. Mashburn for Administrative Matters.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The first item, Under Administrative Matters, has been pulled, so we will go to Item B. And we do have a request from the Fire Marshal's Office to approve a grant application. We do have the Fire Marshal here tonight, Ronnie Thompson for that, and he also has members of his staff here for this presentation. Mr. Thompson.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Mashburn. We're here to request that we be allowed to apply for a grant to be able to purchase a pump, patches and pumper robot. This will be used to enhance our fire safety program.
Any questions from anyone?
Where are the grant funds coming from?
The grant would be through Factory Mutual Insurance.
Through what?
Through Factory Mutual Insurance.
Farmers Mutual.
Farmers Mutual. Okay. Ms. Davidson wrote the grant, or would be writing the grant, and Ms. Sherrill is our fire educator, if you've got any questions.
I do. Under upfront and ongoing cost, you included the fact that the battery is $128 and the CDs are 17 to 20 each. Those are individual items. The purpose of that, of that item, of that category under our briefing sheet is to know how much we should expect that we're going to have to pay out of our budget for the future. Can you give me an idea?
Actually, the batteries and CDs are included with the patches and pumper. If we wanted additional CDs, they would cost us about 16 to $20, 17 to $20 apiece. If we ever had to replace the battery, which according to their statistics, it usually lasts about 20 years, it would cost us.
20 years?
Mm-hmm. If you.
Okay.
It will cost us about $128. So there's very little upkeep on the patches and pumper.
Okay. And are these CDs, CDs that y'all hand out at the schools or something, or?
They're actually CDs that are played through the patches and pumper. It, this actually speaks, and Ms. Sherrill can tell you more about it.
It's music, fire safety songs, public service announcements, and they actually play on the patches and pumper, and his mouth moves in sequence to those as if he were speaking or singing.
Okay, so we're not looking at even $1,000 a year as an ongoing cost?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, good. All right, thank you.
Any additional questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval for the, let them apply for the Farmers Mutual grant.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. 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 Those opposed.
Appreciate your initiative.
Thank you.
Hey, what's the chance of getting that grant? You have any idea how many we're competing with?
What? The chances of getting the grant?
We don't know. It is awarded on a quarterly basis, but we have no idea what the chances are.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next five items actually are from the Solid Waste Department. David Lambert, Solid Waste Director, will be making those presentations.
I'm not here to ask for big money tonight. I know that comment was made when I come in. That's usually what's going on with us.
All your toys are big.
Actually, I'm here to request on this first matter is permission to apply for electronics recycling grant. The state of North Carolina has required that as of July 1st, 2011, electronics can no longer be placed in landfills. It's not a big deal to us in that we've been recycling electronics since 2000. We've had one of the more proactive programs in the state. But there is requirement now that all TVs and computer monitors go in there as well. That has the potential to be expensive. Right now, we have a contract with a company that's not going to charge us, but that could be subject to change in the future. And the state realizes that, so they've made money available through, it's actually funded, I guess, by manufacturer responsibility, but they put money into an account for the state, and then they make it available to the counties or local governments. And fairly simple grant, it's not going to be a lot, it's only five to eight cents per capita, but it's there for the taking, so I'd like to ask your approval for applying for this grant.
You say we can't bury them in a landfill, but you still accept them at the transfer stations, won't you?
We do, we do.
You keep those segregated from the rest of the trash and then?
We do. We've got a company now that's picking up at each one of our sites and taking them to their plant for recycling.
Okay. Can you go ahead?
You mentioned we need minor adjustments to our electronics recycling program that's already in place.
That was basically what we did. We signed a contract with a company that would provide this service at no cost, and the biggest thing is the state, right now, they're not requiring for this grant certifications like the E-Steward, and there's one other one. But this company actually has those certifications already in place, so we're not, you know, basically, we're ready to go.
Any additional questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Some movements, Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. 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 Those opposed.
The next item I have here is actually modification we needed to make to the solid waste plan to allow us to apply for this grant, and it was, it's fairly simple. The points are some things that the state requires in this program, and like I said, we were already doing most of these things. We've been recycling since 2000, been doing it all our sites since 2008. We've recycled about 429 tons since that time. The program the company we signed with has E-Steward and R2 certifications, which are the recognized standards. The materials here, I'm sure you've got this in front of you, shows all the things that we'll be able to take through this program. It's a pretty wide assortment and does have the TVs and the computer monitors, which is very important. Listing contractor responsibilities, there is a public awareness and education requirement there, and we have a plan for that. We'll have to keep up with all the tonnages and break it down as far as what's TVs, what's computers, and we have an agreement with the company to do that as well. And there's also a requirement, how we'll cooperate with the school system or the cities, the towns and the county, in which we've already been doing that as well, and then how we're going to spend the funds, and they will have to be dedicated to things within the electronics program. So, you know, if we need to do advertising or packaging materials or purchase some equipment, we'll be able to do that. It's very similar to the white goods program that we have now. So I'm requesting that the amendment to the solid waste plan be adopted.
Any questions for Mr. Lambert? If not.
I move the amendment to the solid waste program be adopted.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. 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 Those opposed. Thank you.
The next is a request to accept award from the grade grant program. If you remember, September 21st, I brought to you a request to apply for this grant, and it's the grant to replace aging diesel engines, and it's administered through Mecklenburg County Air Quality. And we requested $150,000 towards the purchase of a new landfill compactor, and they actually approved $135,000. We need to go forth with signing this contract agreement with them so we can proceed with this. This compactor was actually already in our budget, so this is just, represents a golden opportunity to defray a portion of the cost. It really amounts to about the first year's payment on that machine. So I'd like to ask that you would approve accepting this grant.
Okay. Any questions?
If we accept it for 135, can you, can you buy what you, you asked for 150. I assume what the size you needed was going to cost 150. Does that mean that now we need to, that we, that your fund needs to come up with the $15,000 difference?
Well, this actually is just a, a portion of the cost. You're allowed to apply for a maximum of a hundred and fifty thousand, so that's what I applied for. This machine will wind up costing about seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So, it's an expensive machine, but-
I should've never asked that.
We do already have it in the budget and a, a, a plan for financing that, and Ms. Blumenstein will be presenting that next if you approve this.
Okay. Any additional questions?
By accepting this grant from, uh, the more, the Mecklenburg Quad County Air Quality, folks, are we making any commitment that they were gonna, they're gonna have any control over what we do in the future, or are we obligating ourselves, or?
Well, we've-
They like to run things down there.
Several members of staff have looked through this. Dean Lyles looked through it. He's talked to the guy that administers this for Mecklenburg County. And basically, Mecklenburg is a grantee. We're like a sub-grantee. Their money comes from EPA, from, uh, uh, something called the Southeast Diesel Collaborative, and there's some, uh, recovery funding in there as well. But it has been done by several other counties in the region. It's been done by, County Moore's was actually replaced a truck, I believe, last year through it. And it seems to be a pretty straightforward process. The big requirements for us, that the machine operates inside Aridale County seventy-five percent of the time, of course, it's, it's gonna be there full-time. We'll operate it about two thousand hours a year, and that's part of the grant, and that we won't sell it for five years. We have to, to keep it on-site.
There's also a requirement as, as to the engine that we're replacing. Uh, it's more than just the engine, but the engine has to be destroyed. That, that engine cannot go to some other piece of equipment.
That's correct. It does require, uh, replacement or destruction of an old piece of equipment. We've got a nineteen eighty compactor with a nineteen ninety-two engine in it that's still running, so that's what we wanna, wanna be able to be rid of. And I'd put down that I estimated the value at forty thousand dollars on it, and I think I was very high with my estimate because we've priced some used compactors, and, uh, they're, they're way below that right now, especially one this age.
Okay, any other questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Aye.
Thank you. As Ms. Blumenstein said, uh, as David said, Ms. Blumenstein has a financial proposal to make, uh, so that we can purchase the, um, the compactor, uh, and we will be financing that if you approve this.
The budget presented to you for this fiscal year for solid waste, assume that this piece of equipment would be a lease purchase. And we have recently, um, talked with the company, and we're, it's about a three point one five percent interest rate to do that. I talked with one of the banks. I did not go out and submit RFPs without your permission to do that, but I did talk with one bank, and they said it would probably be two and a half percent. Well, I feel like if we're gonna have to pay two and a half percent, we'd be better served to pay it to ourselves. We have over six million dollars in, set aside in our solid waste, um, closure, post-closure fund that will not be needed for years to come. And I would recommend that we borrow from that fund, uh, the amount needed to finance this piece of equipment and reimburse ourselves the interest on that instead of going to the outside and having the additional legal fees and closing cost. Uh, the, the T-Rex equipment that has been recommended by Mecklenburg Air Quality, uh, including the warranty, is a total purchase price of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand. The hundred and thirty-five thousand from the grant, that's five hundred and ninety-two thousand. We had a hundred and thirty-eight thousand available for lease payments in this first year. And I have included an amortization schedule to show you that, um, the maximum annual debt service to ourselves, it's a hundred and twenty-four thousand in FY two thousand and twelve. We've already got that built into the solid waste budget, so I feel like this is the best way for us to go. Of course, right now, even invested funds, since, uh, all the county funds have to be collateralized, we're not getting very much on our money at all.
Any questions from anyone? If not, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we accept this, uh, recommendation and approve Budget Amendment Number eighteen A.
Thank you. Mr. Keeler? Any questions regarding the motion? If not, on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
And my final request is, uh, for a resolution approving the issue of a, a sanitary landfill permit by the Division of Waste Management to Aridale County. As you know, we're in the, in the middle of the process of the site suitability study for the landfill. In order to keep this project moving on schedule, we do need to, um, have our materials in place to apply for the permit to construct. And one of the requirements for that is that, that we held a public meeting, and it was properly advertised, and we did that, um, I believe in October, and had thirty-day advance notice advertised on TV, radio, and in the local newspaper. So, fifteen A. N.C.A.C., thirteen B. Point sixteen eighteen, the state code says that, down in section five, "The approval of the Board of Commissioners having authority in the county which the site is located shall be required. Approval may be in the form of either a resolution, or a vote, or a motion." Uh, when you skip down a little bit and paraphrasing, it says, "The jurisdictional local government where the landfill is to be located should hold at least one public meeting to inform the community," which, as I said, we've done that. It explains the, uh, requirements as far as the advertising and the, uh, minutes of the meeting, which you should have in front of you. And there's no money associated with this particular thing. It's already been encumbered on a purchase order previously. So, I'd just like to ask for a, a resolution granting the, the Division of Waste Management permission to issue this permit.
Okay. Any questions? Not on, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Aye. Any questions regarding the motion? Not on, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Ron Smith will present item H and I.
Thank you. Uh, the first request that I have tonight is to accept a grant from N.C. Deener, uh, for up to twenty-five thousand dollars for this, for the upcoming year, uh, for our abandoned mobile home program. Uh, this is something that you've seen before. Back in April, uh, the board signed a resolution or passed a resolution, uh, allowing us to enter into a grant application and supporting going forward with, uh, pursuing this program. Tonight, I have a contract attached to, in your package, and a Budget Amendment, uh, number nineteen, uh, for your consideration and, and approval. Uh, the contract states, um, basically the terms of the, uh, program and has attachments that, uh, would detail the specifics of how our department and planning would work with solid waste and, uh, building inspections to go through with the program. Uh, the second attachment is the Budget Amendment to appropriate where this money would be, uh, shown in the, uh, Sol, Department of Solid Waste's, uh, budget. Um, if you have any questions about the program, I'd be glad to answer them. Uh, we're gonna be spending the next month, if this is approved, working through the logistics, um, going through with a media campaign to get the word out, and probably would not start until the beginning of the year. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith, as far as the logistics you mentioned, uh, is the planning department gonna be, that the point on this thing, is that gonna be the point, at which the public contacts somebody and then?
Well, it's, it's gonna be a combination of planning and solid waste. Uh, what I would anticipate is that the public would probably get in touch with planning on the front end and then deal with the solid waste department as it gets into contractual arrangements and recycling and things of that nature.
Okay.
Any additional questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
The second item that I have is a request that our department received from N.C. DOT, the local office, to abandon and close a portion of Garden Valley Road. Um, Garden Valley Road is in the, I guess, the extreme eastern part of the, of the county. Um, it runs, uh, basically north-south and crosses under the interstate and over the South Yadkin River. What the state is looking to close is about eight hundred and forty feet of the road where the bridge goes over, uh, the South Yadkin River. Um, the reason that they're asking for this is that that's a very, that's an old bridge. Uh, the structure of it is such that when there's flooding, and, and which is pretty common in that area, that it collects a ton of debris, uh, and, and has to, they have to basically close it down for inspections after each heavy rain to make sure that it's structurally sound. Uh, what they wanna do is close it entirely and get out of, um, and not have a bridge there, uh, from this point forward if they, or if the road is abandoned, or this portion of it's abandoned. Uh, we've talked with, uh, the emergency responders, uh, in the area. Uh, they don't see a problem with it. Um, we've subsequently talked with the schools and the local postmaster. Uh, they also see no problem. Basically, that you can go around this bridge and probably go around three miles out of your way, um, but get to the same point, um, but just go in that extra three miles. As part of this request, the, uh, the local state, or the local DOT office has asked that we waive our fee, uh, for our road abandonment. Um, we have a, it's a five hundred dollar fee, which actually is our highest fee that we have. The reason for that is that there's a significant amount of, um, money that goes into one of these requests and staff time. Uh, from this point, if you adopt the resolution attached, we will put a notice in the paper that will run for three consecutive weeks. We'll notify adjacent property owners via registered or certified mail and, and post the property as well. So, um, it is something that is fairly costly, but they have asked that that fee be waived. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have on either the request or the, uh, or the fee waiver.
Any questions?
Did they tell you why they want it to, why they want it waived? I mean, you know, we picked up six hundred grand worth of their retirement, and they, cheezy suckers want five hundred bucks. I mean, what's the problem here? Not giving you a hard time. I just don't have a lot of confidence in the state of North Carolina. I mean.
No, I, I don't have, I don't have a reason from them on the waiver.
Okay. And just be nice with it.
Now, you're not actually asking tonight that they approve this, though. What you're asking is that they set, um, a hearing date so that you can receive public comment on the abandonment of this. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. In, in the resolution, part of that resolution is setting a public hearing, which is required. And I have proposed, in order to meet all of the legal notification requirements, uh, December twenty-first, uh, as that public hearing date, unless another date is more suitable for the board.
Mr. Smith, in your opinion, it is, is this a good idea for the residents of Aridale County or not?
Well, I, I, we put a lot of thought into this. Um, I don't, I, I do think it is a good idea. Uh, it doesn't seem to be a very well-used road. Uh, there's not a lot of property that's developed really on either side of Garden Valley. Um, and you can tell as you, as you travel through the, you know, along Garden Valley Road and along Forty, um, area is very much subject to, uh, to flooding. And I would anticipate a new bridge would, would be pretty costly to, to put in.
And you're saying we, we kinda either gotta build a new bridge, or we gotta do this. There's no keeping the old bridge for all intents and purposes?
Yeah, that, that's my understanding, and it's one of those old wooden, you know, basically a wooden bridge, uh, for the most part, from my recollection.
This is a school bus route. Is that, is that okay with the, uh?
Well, yeah, we've spoken with the schools, and basically, they would just reroute the bus around that point.
Any other questions?
But tonight, we're gonna schedule a public hearing on this abandonment, and at that time, we'll make a decision on whether we waive the five hundred dollars. Is that right?
Actually, I think you probably need to make the decision on the five hundred dollars because we have to have that taken care of before we can advertise it and so forth. Since, um, you know, I, I, my recommendation on it would be that you go ahead and waive the five hundred dollars on this with the, uh, DOT. Um, but, um, I mean, I know that that may be setting a precedent, but, I mean, it is another public entity that, um, we will be looking to for other services, so.
Or is it, I mean, is this a spiteful public entity that we're talking about? I don't mean to be a smart aleck. I'm just asking.
We, we, with the local DOT, we've had a very cooperative effort for many, many years in, uh, building and maintaining the roads. Um, I, I would say that the, the relationship that we've had with the local DOT over these years has been very good.
Are they the, are they the decision-makers in this sort of thing? Let me ask, so we, we don't have to waive this. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um...
And they'd be mad at us-
Decision-makers coming into Raleigh, too.
But it just seems rational for us to save the five hundred dollars, and it seems a little bit strange for someone to expect us to act irrationally. But maybe feelings get hurt that I don't know about. I, I mean, uh, and again, I'm trying to not be a smart aleck. I just don't understand why we would give away money to a, you know, to the state when they've got billions of dollars every year to spend.
Well, what's irrational? Spending three and a half billion dollars you don't have? That's irrational. I mean, that's, and again, I want to clarify, you know, I, I've never had a problem with the local DOT folks. I just have a huge problem with the people who've run this state the last year. They're just grossly incompetent. And I'm sure these guys are getting leaned on to save money wherever they can and hence their request to, for us to waive the fee.
Well, I feel leaned on, too, Mr. Johnson. I don't know about you.
Well-
Are we, are we picking a fight by not giving them five hundred dollars, Mr. Smith?
I, I don't necessarily think we're picking a fight, but I, I'll agree with Mr. Mashburn in that we have had a good working relationship with them, uh, with the local, the local people. Um, you know, I don't think there'd be a reluctance to share information with us in the future or for them to become spiteful, but, you know, I, I think the closer we work together, probably the better off we are.
Well, let me, let me turn that on its head and ask you, have they had a good working relationship with us? Have we been good, uh, good people to do business with over these same years?
The, the local representatives?
Sure.
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
We've, we've been good to them.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Maybe they should give us an additional five hundred dollars.
I knew that was coming.
Well. I'm glad you saw it coming. Well-
The, the local people at the DOT are very professional people. They're very competent people, and they get a lot done with what they're given. They just work for a bunch of idiots, and they can't help that. And that's just pretty much the way it is. They're good people. They, they can build roads if you give them the money and quit robbing it and spending on things, other things. I mean, but I got a lot of respect for those people over there. They do a good job. They, they have helped us out on occasion. Uh, just, uh, Mr. Smith, I'll go along with the five hundred dollars. Just tell them that, uh, they need to tell their bosses to shape up a little bit over there. I'll leave it at that.
Is that a motion, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'll make that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the motion to be split into separate motions. One for the five hundred dollars and one for the public hearing, please.
Okay, no problem. Is that okay with you, Mr. Johnson?
That's fine.
Okay.
My motion would be to waive the five-hundred dollars.
Okay. Motion to waive the five-hundred dollars. Any questions regarding that motion?
And then the, then the other motion will be just to?
Hold the public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, any, any questions regarding the motion? Motion now for waiving the five-hundred dollars. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
No.
Okay. Okay, Nick?
It's four and one. Did you, anybody vote down?
Three and two, wasn't it?
It's three to two at pass. I, I, I would like to ask them why. You know, I, I mean, they're short of money, we're short of money, and we've agreed that we're going to waive it, and that's fine, no, no hard feelings here, but I would like to know why.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, the next motion was a public hearing, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion for, for a public hearing to be held. You had a date for that?
December twenty-first is the date I proposed.
Okay. Any questions regarding that motion? Not on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Thank you.
Okay. Then if we're ready to go on to the next matter, I think, I think this is the first meeting of the county commissioners, our new DSS director, Yvette Smith, and certainly glad that she's here, and she will present item J.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It is a pleasure to be here. I'm Yvette Smith. I am your new Department of Social Services Director. We are very excited about the opportunity to participate in the Job Booth Employment Subsidized Program. We submitted a proposal for a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand to assist thirty ten-IF eligible individuals in obtaining employment here in our community. Tonight, I would like for you to approve the receipt of these ten-IF private foundation funds. I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Smith?
Ms. Smith, wel, welcome to Iredell County, first of all. I understand you're a native of these parts, but.
I sure am. It's good to be home.
Well, you were much talked about prior to your return, although done in private, which became an increasingly difficult task. Elaborate a little further on what you're going to do with this money. You're going to try to find these folks work, is that right? Get them trained up for that?
Yes, we will be partnering with two temporary agencies in our community who will take that ball and employ these thirty individuals into various positions within our community.
Is there any sort of requirement or something that, you know, when the, when the, the six-dollar-an-hour subsidy, when it goes away, then is there any sort of expectation that that, that, that that person is probably going to be worked into a full-time position for that company?
That is our goal, that these individuals will present themselves as invaluable to that employer, and they will show their skills and their abilities, and that employer will continue that employment of them.
So, so in order for the employer to qualify for, for getting one of these employees, they have to show that, that they think that that could become a full-time position? Do you understand what I'm saying is, if somebody needs somebody tempor, just for a temporary job?
Right.
Do they qualify to get a temporary person? Or is this somebody where it's, is, are these funds to be used where it's a company that's thinking about hiring a full-time person and this is some sort of a transitional money? Do you understand? Because one of them leads to full-time employment.
That's correct.
Another one is help somebody out of a temporary fix.
That's correct. The goal is always that these temporary positions will lead into full-time employment, but that is not a, a guarantee. What is, what is there is that the money will pay for twenty weeks of employment for these individuals.
So the employer does not have to make any sort of a case whatsoever that, that they're not just going to take advantage of it for twenty weeks and then, then stop?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Smith, this is kind of a standard question you'll probably have to get used to, but are we making any ongoing commitment as a county to, to do anything after this program ends? After the federal funding ends?
One of, one of the reasons that we are working with the temp agencies is that they take ownership of the individuals that they assist. And so if, say, for instance, after the twenty weeks, some individuals do not, cannot find full-time employment with their current employer, these temp, temp agencies will re, will find other opportunities for these individuals with other companies. So they become sort of like their clients.
I guess I'm asking, is, is the federal government asking us to continue any part of a program that they start?
I say no.
Any additional questions, Ms. Smith? Not on, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Any questions regarding the motion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Thank you.
Welcome to the shooting gallery.
Thank you.
David Martin, a emergency management director, is here to request funding or an agreement for funding on the Viper project that I think most of you've heard about.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I am here this afternoon, this evening, to request your approval for a memorandum of agreement for Iredell County to act as a sub-grantee with the North Carolina Emergency Management Division of Homeland Security for a Viper grant to place a Viper tower on Fox Mountain. This is an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that is coming down to the North Carolina Department of, or Emergency Management Department through the Division of Homeland Security, or Department of Homeland Security, in an interoperability communications project. The state got five-point, it was five-point-two million to build six sites, and we had been trying to get the Highway Patrol, who manages the Viper program, to place a tower in proximity, hopefully on Fox Mountain, that would give us a whole lot better Viper coverage with our Viper units. And they have agreed to do so. The only stipulation is, coming down from the Department of Homeland Security, is that Iredell County has to act as a sub-grantee for this project. So we have been asked to sign a memorandum of agreement for this eight-hundred-thousand dollars, us acting as a sub-grantee, to sign the agreement, and this is to ask for that, approval for that, and for Mr. Mashburn to sign the agreement.
It says Fox Mountain in Iredell County. It's.
Yes, sir.
Fox Mountain is in the county?
Yes, sir.
Just to the east of one fifteen.
I didn't know it was in the county.
Who, who owns that land, that, that part of the mountain where the tower would be?
Mr. Godfrey?
Yeah, Will, Will.
Who?
Godfrey family. Godfrey, Lumberkind. So they, they're willing to have a long-term lease on it?
What I understand, the lease has already been worked out between the North Carolina Highway Patrol and the landowner.
Okay, yeah. They came to me about a year ago and asked if that was a possibility, and I put them in touch with David. What, what would be the height of that tower?
I don't remember. I haven't got the specs on the tower, but I'm thinking that the acquisition director told me it's going to be about four-hundred foot.
Four-hundred foot?
Yep, there it is.
Steve, that going to ball at the airport? Coming in? No, your approach is nowhere close to that.
I was thinking more about Miller or, it'd be close to Miller, wouldn't it?
Yeah, could be.
Because Miller runs north-south.
Ron, I don't know another tower this would be close to. I know we got an ordinance that restricts towers from a certain proximity to another. I don't know another one up that way, do you?
No, I, I don't, I don't. And actually, in, in talking, are you talking about, is Miller another airstrip?
Airpark, yeah.
I think it's, is it FCC?
FAA.
At the FAA, they generally are going to require a study to be made to ensure that they're, you know, not within.
I'm sure that's already been done.
When we adopted the Holland Tower, we had to do that before we even started. I remember when we did, I don't know if it was the last one, but when we did one of those ordinances regulating the placement of towers, everyone who owned a private strip in the county was given an opportunity to re, register with the FAA and the FCC, so that was taken into consideration, but.
Okay, any additional questions, Mr. Martin?
I'm just glad to see it. I sat on the Homeland Security Committee for Central Atlanta back years ago after nine-eleven, and we sat there, meeting after meeting, and all the local folks would tell, we've got nice fire trucks, we've got ambulances, we've got rescue squads, we've got trained people, we need better communication. They'd send us more refrigerators to put, to put medicine in in case somebody got smallpox or typhoid, and we'd go back to the next meeting. We'd say, we need better communication. They would send us some more refrigerators. We had.
Or generators, yeah.
Yeah, we had refrigerators running out of our rear end, but we couldn't talk to anybody, so.
Mr. Johnson, I'm.
That's the federal government for you, but thank you.
I misunderstood somebody, where they said the location of this was. It's nowhere near Miller Airpark.
Okay.
So that was a misunderstanding.
Any additional questions? Not, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions regarding the motion? Not on, in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, sir. Item L is a request from the Tax Department to approve the October two-thousand-and-ten refunds and releases. There's eighty-seven-thousand, forty-three dollars and fifty-five cents in releases, one-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and eighty-five cents in refunds. Tax Department recommends approval.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
The item M is an item that came up at the last meeting discussing oversight of funds that are used in Special Operations Division of the Sheriff's Department, and it was to be put back on this agenda tonight for further discussion. I think we have provided some information to you as to how these funds are currently, the oversight that they currently receive. Mrs. Blumstein is here to respond to any questions you may have concerning that. And again, the, the request at the last meeting was that you consider appointing one or more of the county commissioners to serve in oversight of these special operating funds.
Mr. Chairman, my motion is just that we have, that we designate one member of the commission, and I would recommend it be the chairman, that would be consulted by any department asking for confidential funds prior to the request for the funds and for the chairman or, or the designated member to discuss that with the appropriate department and reach a conclusion and make their recommendation to this board prior to us dispersing funds.
I read that email and, reading that email, seeing that the county manager is responsible, the finance officer's responsible, the chief is responsible. I just didn't know how many more people would need to be responsible.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I feel like what, what I read in the email, and Mrs. Blumstein can correct me if, if I misstate this, but what I, what I read was that she has established a paper trail whereupon an audit would produce any evidence of wrongdoing, but barring such an audit, which would be retrospective, you might not see any wrongdoing. Now, the sheriff is an elected official. He has political oversight of his department, and in, in a very executive kind of way, he decides what's done with that money. But we have been given oversight of, of spending intentionally, I suppose, and it seems to me that we should, prior to spending amounts that sometimes exceed six figures, we should have the opportunity to ask the appropriate department questions so that we're satisfied with the answers. It may be that we're, we're satisfied after one simple question or after no questions, but I would like someone on the board to, to have that opportunity and to let the rest of the board know that they're, they're okay with it. And I'd like that to be an elected person.
Any additional comments?
Mr. Chairman, when the first, matters first brought up prior meeting, I, I guess perhaps the first thing that came through my mind is the old saying from World War II, loosely up sink ships. And I was a little bit apprehensive about how far we want to, we want to go. When you begin an investigation such as these of a very sensitive nature, the, the fewer people who know about it, perhaps the better off you are. And certainly the greater number of people, the possibility of the investigate, investigation being compromised certainly goes up. I, I do think that Mr. Cadel makes a valid point. So I guess the question is how, you know, how much should we know and then when should we know it? I guess are the two questions you, you look at in the contemplation of such a matter. And one possibility I had that they would report back to this board or some member of this board after any bills of indictment were issued. And then in a discussion with Mr. Mitchell earlier, he says, well, what if you, you have an informant you're paying? And that became knowledge, could certainly endanger the life or at least the well-being of that informant. And I think that's a good point. I guess the question I have at this point is for Mr. Mashburn. And I did look at the information Miss Blumstein sent us, and I was, I was fairly satisfied with the process of auditing these expenditures. So the, the question still remained as to是否 protecting the identity of any informant or, or any officer in exposing them to, to any, any harm. And I think we need to be careful that if any of this information is shared, and I'll pose this question to you, Mr. Mashburn, we always redact the names of, of anyone involved in the investigation, is whether they be an informant, whether they be the object of the investigation, or whether they be an officer. Those names are redacted or, or blacked out on any financial reporting we do. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And are you satisfied, Mr. Mashburn, that the audit process we have in effect now is adequate to make sure that the money is spent as?
As far as financial, as far as financial controls, I think the financial controls are in place. That may or may not satisfy the board's desire to know more, but as far as the financial controls, they, they are in place.
Okay, so then, then we arrive at the point, that, that being the case, we're at the point where, where we'd need to differentiate between the audit of the expenditures and the effectiveness of the expenditures. And I guess that's getting to the heart of what Mr. Cadel's about, is that he's not necessarily accusing anyone of wrongdoing, he's just wanting to make sure that this is an effective expenditure of the money. of the money. Uh, let me preface, any further remarks? By this, I was a little bit surprised when this item was on the agenda, because I know that we've taken subsection in closed session before, uh, as far as undercover operations. Uh, I don't not, I'll confess my ignorance is exactly the specifics of this particular investigation. I guess if you wanted to satisfy, and I, I, given the information given, I am satisfied that the audit procedure in place is adequate, and that the audit of the expenditures is, is a sound process according to, uh, standardized accounting principles. Um, I guess if you wanted to monitor the effectiveness of the expenditures, then perhaps you could ask the Sheriff's Department at some point to come back to us and tell us what was the result of the investigation, without mentioning the names of any officers, any informants, or for that matter, any person who's the object of an indictment. We all read the newspaper and the internet, we'll figure that probably out on our own, but they could, uh, they could communicate to us the results of the investigation. And that's, I, I think that adequately addresses both concerns, but I, I do not, I wanna be very careful that we do not compromise an investigation, and we do not compromise the safety of anybody involved in an investigation by having too many people privy to everything that's going on. Right now, I think we have, uh, an adequate firewall there, I wanna maintain that, but, uh, that's my thinking on the matter.
Okay, any other comment?
I have a question for Mr. Mashburn. Mr. Mashburn, am I correct that whatever audit procedure we have is in fact retrospective, looks, looks back at, at what happened to the funds?
Well, it, it would look back, but it also would look at the controls that we've got in place, uh, to-
But in other words, when, when we issue the money, we don't find out what happened to the money unless an investigation occurs, and if that investigation does occur, it happens after the fact and after the money has been spent.
Well, and I'm gonna call on Ms. Blumstein to, to fill in any blanks. Once, when they request the money, there is, you know, the request is made, but there's also some follow-up reporting that they have to make to show that those funds are actually expended. Now, we, we don't necessarily know, and correct me if I'm wrong, we don't necessarily know what particular buy was made and who, who the, the participants were in that, but there is reporting to show that, that indeed those expenditures were made, and you may wanna fill in the blanks on that, Ms. Blumstein.
That's correct. Um, the, typically a check is converted to cash, and the cash is used in the investigation. The funds are reported, the expenditure of those funds and the balances of those funds are, are reported to my office at the end of each month, and Deb or myself one traces out every, um, disbursement from that fund. There are case numbers typically. I do not want any names at all on those reports.
But Ms. Blumstein, we don't have a, we don't have an absolute definition of, of the two words "special operations," do we?
No, sir.
And if someone were to convert this cash to some non-public use, you wouldn't know about that at all unless you conducted an investigation. Is that correct?
We accept the information that they report for case files, case numbers as-
At face value.
At face value, what is stated.
If someone lied to you, there's no way for you to know about it.
That's correct. But I've never had any, I've never had any indication that there was a problem, and I've been working with that fund since nineteen eighty-five.
But again, you might not, and I, and this is not an indictment of our department, but-
Right. Any, any financial controls, if you've got collusion, they can be, um, avoided.
Well, we, we sent a bunch of deputies to jail in Davidson County about ten years back.
Right, I understand. That's why I say, if there's collusion, never had any reason to believe that's the case, but with any financial controls, when there's collusion, you can never be sure that everything's perfect.
And, and, and I wanna say, it's not, it's not the business of this board to decide or to determine if collusion or criminal activity has occurred, and I'm not suggesting that it is, but it is the business of this board to make sure that funds are spent for a public purpose and for a good public purpose in an, in an efficient manner, and it just seems to me that it's incumbent upon us to ask whatever questions we deem appropriate to satisfy ourselves that money we're spending on behalf of taxpayers is being spent appropriately.
Ms. Blumstein, am I correct that there's two or three people in the Sheriff's Department also has similar responsibilities as yours of keeping up with where the money's going?
Yes, um, there's a supervisor and several officers, and then at the end of the month, the cash is even counted by a, by the chief deputy.
Okay.
Certifies the amount of cash that's still on hand in each officer's account.
So, from where you sit or stand, we've got a lot of oversight already without adding more oversight. You think we need overs- more oversight, more than what you're doing now?
That's not, I, I think my office is doing all that it's responsible for doing. Um, I would never want anybody on my staff, myself or anybody on my staff, to have, to know any names.
Okay.
Because once something gets out-
Right.
You never know where, where the leak was, and it's not gonna be from the Finance Department.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
Uh, Ms. Blumstein, the fu- the funds that you oversee, what can, what all can those funds actually be used for?
They typically use them for buy money, for payments to informants. Those are the two.
Actually, no other county services. It, it cannot be put in general funds in any way whatsoever, right?
That's correct.
It is totally seized funds that we're talking about?
Well, there have been county funds used in the past, but in the last couple of years, it's been all seized money, because used to, you know, five years ago, there wasn't a lot of seized money, and that crime prevention was up to ninety thousand dollars at one point. It's what's called, it's, that's the line item in the budget, is crime prevention. This year it was twenty-seven five, a hundred percent of it was seized money.
And I think our sheriff, probably the leading sheriff in the state now for getting seized funds and drugs off the highway, from what I've read about in the paper and what I've heard, our Sheriff's Department-
They do very well. Um, that so far this year, um, the receipts this fiscal year have not been as great in the past, but there's already, there's still over three hundred thousand dollars in federal equity sharing money.
When, when money goes out, you know, there are some instances where the money's gonna go out, and we know it's not gonna come back in. If it's going to an informant or if it's gonna go for a small buy leading up to a larger buy, we know that money's going out and it's not coming back in. If it's to make a purchase that, where there's gonna be arrest immediately afterwards, so that means you're gonna get the money back. Do, do we know that going in, into any of these, or you just know how much-
I know how much they ask for.
And that's it.
I know how much they ask for.
Let me, let me just give you some history here, and this, this is, I've been mulling in my mind, how do you communicate this without saying too much. Folks, a, a few years ago, I sat back with some other people in one of these rooms back here, and the Sheriff's Department came to us, and they wanted thirty thousand dollars, and like Ms. Blumstein said, back then, there wasn't a lot of seized drug money. It came out of the county coffers, and they were gonna investigate some cigarette purchases at JR's, transporting cigarettes across state lines for resale is an illegal activity, and that's what they were investigating. And a lot of you in this room know where that investigation wound up. It wound up in the Middle East, because people in this country were buying those cigarettes at places like JR's. They were selling, they were taking to Detroit, selling the cigarettes and using the money to fund terrorism, and it resulted in a federal trial down here in Charlotte. Now, if somebody wants to tell me that I'm not a good steward of the money because I do not want to know much about that, then I'll just bear that burden. But I don't wanna know that. And the reason I do not wanna know about that is because I personally care more about the person who is on the ground in that investigation and their well-being and the success of that operation. I care more about that than what I think, than I care about what people think of me. Now, I cannot sit here for the life of me, figure out any methodology by which you can measure the effectiveness of such an endeavor on the front end without compromising the task before these people, and it is a difficult task. Now, if you wanna talk about some methodology by which you can, after Ms. Blumstein and Mr. Mashburn have conducted an audit of the expenditures, then if you wanna talk about afterwards the effectiveness of those expenditures, and then use your assessment of that effectiveness to determine whether you will grant such a request in the future, that is the way to do it, and it's the way it should be. At the end of that investigation, you can say, you can hear them say, "We had this many people arrested, this much money was spent, here's what we got in federal revenue, this was a very successful operation," and then you will base your decision on the next operation based on the effectiveness of that. I know that that's Monday morning quarterbacking, but I do not know of a way to conduct that type of oversight on the front end without putting too many people in the loop who may compromise someone's safety, and that's kinda where I am on it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not suggesting anything is in conflict with what Mr. Johnson said. That, that's fine, for instance, uh, to, to have that person have an ongoing conversation with the department and, and continually monitor that after the fact, continually monitor that in such a way as not to compromise an investigation or any investigations, but for that person to be in the know to the extent that, that, that they can look at the rest of this board and say, "Someone outside the department has looked into this matter. I believe that, that the department continues to do the right thing, and I believe this continues to be a good use of taxpayers' money, and I recommend that you vote for it," or you may say, "I recommend that you vote against it based on, based on reasons that I will be glad to give you, uh, in a, uh, in a closed session," at, at which time we could enter closed session and discuss the problem if, if there was one. But I, I, I think my recommendation is consistent with, with Mr. Johnson's wishes.
Mr. Mitchell, you have anything?
Uh, I, if it's ready, I'd just like to table it till after the closed session and come back.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
All right. Okay, a request for approval of November ninth minutes?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Announcing a faces occurring on boards and, and commissions, there are none. Appointments to boards and commissions, Recreation Advisor Board, four appointments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one of those.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Barbara Thorson.
Okay. Are there other announcements or nominations?
Uh, nominate Bob Howell, Bill Freshwater, and Mark Hyland.
Okay. Any additional? If not, all in favor of those four, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Uh, Tony Board of Adjustment, four appointments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mac McCombs and Linda Breyer.
Okay. Any additional?
We still haven't heard anything from Ms. Parrish or Mr. Weiss, Madam Clerk.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, Mac McCombs and Linda Breyer. Okay, all in favor of those two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Board of Health, four appointments?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to nominate Mark Tartt and Dr. Kimberly Randall.
Any additional names?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Dr. Heather Daye and, uh, Mary Johnson.
Okay, that is four. All in favor of those four, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Homeland Community Care Block Grant Committee, six appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Doc Blackwelder, Vicky Caldwell, Mildred Johnson, Mary Jo Danner, Barbara Barrier, and Carolyn Jordan.
Okay. Any additional names? If not, all in favor of those six, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Farmland Preservation Board, one appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table that one.
Okay. Motion to table. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Criminal Justice Partnership Program Committee, six appointments?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Sarah Kirkman and Carl Robbins.
Okay. Any others? Okay, all in favor of those two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.
Mr. Chairman, we can return to the Farmland Preservation Board.
Sure.
One moment. Uh, I've got a couple of names. I talked to, uh, Mr. Vaughn.
Uh-huh.
We really need someone in the, from the southern county, part of the county, if at all possible, to take Mr. Overcash's place, and he's given me a couple of names, and I came up with one in talking to Ms. Tice this afternoon. I'll contact those folks.
Okay.
And try to have you nominate, but they-
Okay.
Who, who else is on that board now?
Oh, uh, Jim Dobson, Charles Carter.
We just need someone from Southern, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a couple of good prospects down that way.
Okay. Personnel Advisory List, we're looking for somebody there, am I right, Ms. Moore?
Uh, yes, sir, and we have an applicant, Denny Miller, is interested in serving.
Okay, Denny Miller?
Of which one?
Personnel Advisory Committee.
On the reminder list.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I'll meet Denny Miller.
Okay.
Human Resources with J.C. Steel.
Any additional on none of these? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Unfinished business, we have any unfinished business? Okay, if not, we'll move to public comment period. I think I have one name of someone who wanted to speak.
Actually, I think Mr. Walden has left.
Mr. Walden, yes.
He's no longer here.
He's gone?
Thank God.
Okay. I move a new business, any new business? Okay, County Managers Report.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I just have one item that I think is, uh, worthy of, um, public announcement here, in that last week, the, um, there was the Farm City, um, Annual Meeting that was held at the Agriculture Extension Office, Cooperative Extension Office, and, um, there was some information presented there that, um, sometimes we take for granted, but I thought there were numbers that were worthy of, uh, further, uh, consideration. In, in Arnold County Farm Income for two thousand and nine, which is the last, um, numbers that we have available at this time, the dairy industry brought in forty-four million one hundred sixteen thousand dollars, poultry industry brought in thirty-one million fourteen hundred fourteen thousand dollars, then there were also twenty, there's twenty-one thousand five hundred ninety dollars in field crops, and then, um, several other areas bring in a total of total farm income in- in the Arndale County for 2009 of a hundred and eighteen million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And I, and, you know, I, I bring that up just to show you that, um, you know, we have a lot of, um, different types of industry, diversification of industry in Arndale County, but certainly agriculture still plays a very major role in our economy, and, um, with all the bad things that are, that are going on as far as the economy right now, and of course the agriculture industry is not totally, uh, immune from, from the downturn, but it is still bringing in a, a large, um, base into Arndale County, and, and I just wanted to bring that to, to the attention. I know most of you were at that meeting, but, uh, since this would get it into the record, I think, I think it'd be good to bring it up.
Thank you, Ms. Mashman. Do you have anything else with Mashman? Oh, at this time, we will go into closed session on the Personnel, GS 143, 318.11, Section A, Item Six. Section A, Item 6.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we set the salary at, for the newly appointed Register of Deeds, at the county step, closest to $57,000, within the grade range of...
Seventy-five.
The paid grade seventy-five. Paid grade seventy-five, and that we eliminate the travel allowance, is that correct? The monthly travel allowance?
Well, that was...
I think Mr. McCaw was going to make that request at a later date.
Okay, we'll scratch the travel allowance then, and leave the rest of the motion intact.
Okay. So you've heard the motion, do you have any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.